Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 7th, 2018, and first ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Now, I'll ask Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward and give our invocation this morning.
Let's pray. Gracious God, our heavenly Father, we give you praise and offer you thanks for your glorious blessings of life and for providing for us in ways that we don't even know how to ask. We ask your blessing on this meeting. Please, God, our commissioners, as they consider the matters that come before them, we continue to pray that you'll give them wisdom and discernment that they may lead us well and wisely. But, Father, we pray that you'll give us all wisdom, that we may be led well, that we'll participate in governance in responsible and civil ways that work toward the betterment of our community. And we ask your blessing, that as the world watches, that you would even grant that Haywood County would be an example, not only to our state and our nation, but that in some way that would go beyond what we're able to ask or think, we might be an example to the world of how government can work and how people can come together for the betterment of our neighbors. All of this we pray with thanksgiving. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Next, we've got public comment session. I don't have anyone signed up this morning, but if anyone would like to come forward for public comment, they may do so at this time. Generally, we limit public comment to approximately three minutes. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to constituent concerns. Mike?
Just, you know, had a few, but been, they've been handled, so.
Kevin? All right. Then, next, we'll move to administrative agency reports. The first thing we've got is introduction of new county employees. We've been trying to do this every month or so. Joel Mashburn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have several this morning because we have two months that we will be introducing employees to you. Not all employees were able to be here, so I'm going to ask them, as I call their name and their department, just to stand and remain standing until I've introduced all of them. From the Health and Human Services, we have Sheridan Lewis, who is a social worker; Dana Ash, physician extender; Emily Jenkins, public health nurse; Amanda Dever, income maintenance caseworker; Holly Birchfield, income maintenance caseworker; Angela Graham, income maintenance caseworker; and Christine Millet, income maintenance caseworker; Ashley Wells, processing assistant; and then Ira Dove, if Ira is able to be here, Ira Dove, who is our new Health and Human Service Agency Director. Those are the people from Health and Human Services. And now, we have from the Sheriff's Office, Zachary McDarris, detention officer; Curtis Whitson, court officer; Timothy Miller, deputy; and Joseph Kilby, deputy. Those are from the Sheriff's Office. From our Finance Office, we have Christian Owen, our new internal auditor; and then Tax Assessor's Office, we have Donna Suggs, who is a tax clerk; and then, our new librarian is Kathy Fossler, who is our library director, and Kathy is here with us. Chairman and Commissioners, these are our newest employees for Haywood County, and we would like for you to give them a welcome.
Well, we do welcome you as being county employees, and we appreciate your service. We want to recognize folks that are new to the county, at least introduce them to us and to other county employees as well. We like to work as a group as much as possible, but we thank you very much for being here. And if you need to go ahead and go and get back to work, you're more than welcome to do so right now. Thank you. All right, now, we've got Bill Nolte with us this morning, interim Haywood County Superintendent, to give us an update on Haywood County's school safety. Bill, we thank you very much for being here. We had a couple of folks last time at public comment that were asking about school safety, and, of course, we had a short discussion at our work session, so we thought if it was, if at all possible, if you could come speak with us, we'd be happy to have you.
I'm glad to be invited, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me to talk about school safety. It's, I'll try not to be too lengthy, but it is a very serious and complicated issue. I think there have, there are lots of layers. I've made lots of notes. I promised not to use all of them, and if I just get too long, we just start pulling on your ear or something, and I'll stop and change subject or stop altogether. I think the first thing that I'd like to do is just, as I begin to think about what I would say to you, is just to try to put things into perspective. It's a very complicated issue, and if you don't focus on the important parts of it, you can sometimes come up with solutions that are costly but do not work. So, I was reminded that there's really not a 100% guarantee that you can prevent school safety. There are lots of really good things that you can do, but ill-minded people can usually figure out a way to work around those. We've certainly had shootings in lots of public places, public schools, private schools, parochial schools. You've probably seen some of those in the past: movie theaters, concerts, workplaces, urban settings, rural settings. And people have certainly used things other than firearms to hurt people when they were ill-intended, vehicles on sidewalks or walkways. So, it's very important to remember that harm to our students could come in lots of forms and fashion. We've learned a lot along the way, unfortunately. I can remember Columbine. That's when we learned that it's probably not a protracted hostage wait-and-see situation anymore. School safety now is one of those first-five-minute kind of things that you have to really think about. From Sandy Hook, we learned that even if you have locked doors with wire mesh and cameras that a crazy person can come and shoot their way in. So, while those things are very important, and we need those, and we have those in some of our schools, that's not a guarantee. And in Stoneman Douglas, the most recent, at least most recent and publicized school shooting, we learned that it's not a problem that can be handled by schools or probably one government body. It's very, very complicated. The school down there had suspended the student and reported the student numerous times to officials and other agencies, and the student, or former student, was able to blend back in and get back in school. There's a lot of conversation about SROs, and we love our five. We have added one more to the local current expense budget and talked to you about that during our work session. But, SROs don't solve every problem either. Our last evacuation at Tuscola High School would not have changed had we had more SROs there. So, we just have to think about how complicated the issue is and what are some of our practical In terms of what we're doing, we do a lot of things. We like to tell people about some of those or some that we want to keep secret simply because we don't want people to know what we're doing that could allow them to harm us or cause more harm. We have crisis management plans that every school does every year. They're updated. The most recent one planned, sets of plans for schools, were updated in February at the regular February school board meeting. We conduct annual trainings with admin, principals, assistant principal, central level administrators, SROs, a lot of our emergency response partners. We do that all the time. Our next big training is scheduled for August the 25th on a Saturday, so we do that. And that work across multiple agencies is just invaluable when we have a real situation. Everyone has a job. Some are directing traffic. Some are housing an incident command center. Others are either trying to protect students in the moment or move students, and so that planning is very, very helpful, and we're very thankful to live and work with the community partners that we have. Our schools have a minimum of three crisis lockdown or similar plans, drills each year, minimum of three each year. Our eight elementary schools have locked buzzer-in front door video systems, access systems during the school day. Not that an ill-minded person couldn't come early or stay late, but during the day, it's fairly difficult to get access at our elementary schools in the front door. Our high schools and middle schools have resource officers that work on their campuses. Tuscola, Pisgah, Central Haywood, Waynesville Middle, we've been sharing one between Bethel and Canton Middle and should be able to remedy that with next year's budget, local current expense budget that has been approved. We have electronic rapid notification tools. We, there are actually some panic type buttons in schools that send a message to a relay system, and then that relay system pretty quickly calls other people and tells them what to do, notifies other people. Our law enforcement partners have access to our campus four plans. We have Knox boxes, which contain keys to our buildings on campuses, and law enforcement's the only one that have those keys to access buildings in case we can't get them in because of a particular situation, and so that's available. We have video surveillance that is available to remotely access cameras in a crisis situation. We don't give that to everyone for lots of confidentiality reasons, but we can remotely access that with a Wi-Fi in a vehicle or in a nearby location and see those cameras. We've had that actually for some time. When we're aware of specific credible threats, we promptly intervene and try to provide assistance. We're typically in charge until law enforcement gets there, and when the first one arrives, that individual's in charge regardless of their jurisdiction, and then when the jurisdiction folks get there, they take over, and they respond very, very quickly, and we're very pleased with that. We often, and we don't publicize this because we don't want to frighten people, and we certainly don't publicize things that aren't credible, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second, but we're often intervening in situations at night and on the weekends. The school principal, oftentimes accompanied by one of our law enforcement partners from the Sheriff's Department, or Waynesville PD, or Canton PD, or Maggie, or Clyde, we're investigating things to determine whether or not they're reliable or accurate, and then sometimes actually intervening over the weekend to try to put something at bay before it has a chance to enter the schoolhouse door. We have many safety plan items that we keep confidential, and we do that on purpose. We have learned, unfortunately, from other situations, that if people want to harm you and they know your evacuation route, or know what you do every time an alarm goes off, they'll hurt you when you go outside for a fire drill. So, that's very concerning, but we, we're usually in conversation with the school admin and law enforcement within the first minute, trying to determine the direction we're going. And I could talk a little bit about, more about that time if you'd like for me to. Just the last set of comments for me, and then I'll try to take some questions. My biggest thing, and this is me personally, but I also believe our board, is that we just need to make sure we're implementing practical solutions. It's really easy to get emotional and spend several million dollars that can easily be worked around by someone who is ill-minded or intended on hurting someone. There are calls for more SROs, and we would love to have them, but I'm not, I think, as I said in our work session, there may not be enough property tax money in Haywood County to take care of every safety need. So, those could, would certainly be helpful, but that wouldn't solve every problem, and I think needs to be part of a bigger issue. There's talk about doors and gates and fences and bulletproof glass, and we just need to remember that when we do things like that, that the innocent people who could be the victim of some ill-intended person or evil-minded person can also get out. A lot of problems occur from within, usually someone who knows the school, and so I'm a little concerned about a fence around every school because then you'd have to screen each individual coming in to make sure they didn't have something, and in a crisis situation, you want to keep bad people out, but you also want good people to be able to get out if they're in the middle of a crisis. I think some of the practical solutions are really within our grasp locally, but many of them are not, in my opinion. We need the ability to remove people who are willfully and intentionally aggressive. They have a long history of that. I'm not talking about mental illness. There are a lot of people with anxiety disorder, or depression, or some other therapeutic need who are very, very safe and sweet and kind and people that you would want to be with. I'm talking about people who, for a long time, have threatened and hurt people, and we have a pretty good record of that. I think that would probably take some legislative change at the state and federal level, but when those folks are identified, they're more likely to be, in my opinion, a perpetrator. So, we need the ability to remove those folks. A lot of times, the law will not allow us to remove a student who meets that profile for more than 45 days. That's just some federal regulation that applies to some students. We need the ability to communicate more personal information, I think, among community agencies about people who have been repeatedly aggressive, and they have demonstrated that, and we have a long record of that. We can usually do that legally in the moment of a crisis, but if we see someone who has hurt people for a long, long time, it's hard to talk to law enforcement or other agencies about them, given our current federal laws, unless there's a crisis at hand. And that'll be a really interesting thing if anybody's ever willing to try to approach it. Certainly, we couldn't handle that here. That's a federal issue, in my opinion. And then, we also need some teeth, I think, probably in legislation in the courts, to make sure that some folks really can't get access legally to firearms. And that's a trick, and I, you know, I'm a gun guy, so I'm not certainly against firearms, but there are a few folks that we need to make sure can't get their hands on them, and again, I think that's beyond the role of the Commissioner, but just painting the big picture here. Those are the general comments, and I've brought more notes, and I know you want to have your meeting and not talk to me the whole time, but I'd be certainly welcome to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Commissioners, you have any questions?
Well, I've worked with Bill for a long time, Bill. I do know that you do your research, and you've, you have checked out other situations and see how that could apply to Haywood County. I think we're doing all we can do. I know you could have SRO in every elementary school, but, you know, most of our schools, except maybe North Canton, as far as elementary, we contained right in one building. North Canton, I think, is that still one, I can't remember if we have a separate building?
Yeah, there are multiple buildings there.
Yeah. And you have the same problem in high school, middle school. You have, on, your high schools is a campus style. When we talked about this a long time ago, it would take a lot of money to connect all the buildings at the two high schools.
It'd take a lot of money, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but again, we just have to be very, very practical. If you just put control access in, I was talking to Joe earlier, at a high school, you're talking about a quarter million dollars that allows doors to be locked during the day, and people can still get in and out who are supposed to be there. But even that has its problems because people can, you know, learn the access code, or get the FOB, or whatever you're using. And the thing that some people don't like to hear, but you know me a long time, I just say what I think people need to think about, whether it's popular or not, there, in a free society, we have to have open, we have to have an open society if it's going to be free, and if we're going to be effective and have a great learning atmosphere with high-performing students academically and extracurricularly, we really have to move between buildings and have, you know, science in one building at a high school, and English and history and other things in high schools. And even if you had one building, which I'm not suggesting because of the cost, there's still lots of problems with that. If someone gets in, then they have access to every building. One of the benefits of having multiple buildings is if there's a problem in building, I won't use A, B, C, D, E, because those are our names up there, but if there's a, if there's a problem in building X, we very often can lock those other buildings and then deal with our law enforcement partners with that particular building. So, it's a very complicated process. And I do, I do agree, Mr. Upton, that most responsible schools and school systems are doing many of the things within their control, and I think the next level of improvement is really going to have to come legislatively around what we can do with a few folks who, whose rights sometimes allow them to harm others, and what we're going to need to do legislatively with sharing information. And that's a very slippery slope, and I'm glad other people get to go down that road, but it's one we probably need to go down at the state and federal level.
Bill, also, in the past, we would, and I'm guilty of this, we develop a safety plan, and it gathered dust. What I see now is a constant review of the safety plan in every school. Am I not right on that? And I think that's the most important, that we see where our weaknesses are and try to close that gap.
We do. We, we had a review of the last evacuation, I think, on March the 12th. I'd have to go back and look at that day. I believe it was a Tuesday, and we didn't have to schedule a special meeting for that. We already had a meeting scheduled with a lot of our law enforcement and crisis management partners in the community. There was already a meeting scheduled. So, we do talk a lot, maybe not as much as we should, but we plan together, we go through drills together, and we have good partners. We, sometimes we'll do that on one of our school campuses. Sometimes we'll do that at the college. We've been through any number of scenarios: the active school shooter, the school bus hostage situation, the, well, I don't want to list too many of them, but just trust me, we've reviewed a lot of those. Not that we could prevent any of them, but I do think in a situation that might occur, we would be able to limit some of the problems because we've planned well, and we have really good partners who work with us to make a lot of that happen.
Just a comment. You know, it's, of course, with being on school board and being there, I know that, you know, a lot of times, you know, we were working on a lot of things, being proactive on situations that had not occurred but could possibly occur. And, you know, some of the things that have been brought up about school safety, obviously you all are very deep into working those situations, and so it's really good to know and really good to get it out that, you know, there's a lot going on behind the scenes and, you know, working on it, and you don't want to show your cards, basically, is what it is, because then somebody knows what you're doing, so.
That's right. You don't want to show your cards. You also don't want to frighten people. If we hear something, we want to know it's credible, which, if you look it up, you know, in most dictionaries, it, the definition is, it's probable, more than likely it will or can occur. In situations like that, then we're doing a direct call to parents and notifying the media and saying that we're evacuating. If, if it's not very credible, doesn't seem to be a credible threat, we're still all over it and sometimes still do a public release to let people know, but we do it after the fact, so people won't share misinformation. So, that's, there are things that you do to protect yourselves that you don't want to share, and then at the same time, we have, with 72, almost 7,300 students across 15 schools, we have a situation every day which you have to pay attention to. Thankfully, the vast majority of the time, you check it out, it's not really credible at all. It may be offensive, you know, or a little concerning, but you have to manage both of those things. And then, when it's credible and likely to occur, then you just jump all over it. And again, I've said this before, but I'm very thankful that we have the emergency management and law enforcement partners that we have to respond when we think it's something that very likely could occur or is occurring.
Also, when we were, when Brandon and I were in, watched, at the White House Conference, there was a Commissioner, I believe he was from Iredale County, actually. He was a retired police officer, and his wife was a school teacher, and he had recommended, I guess I remember this because I would favor it, but he had suggested that we, they really needed more funding for school resource officers and guidance counselors, and he felt like that was a good, a good way to do that. But, like you said, it's going to take funding, and that's, you know, if the, he was, he was really, you know, trying to get, you know, telling the federal government that we need, you know, more funding for that.
Well, we would certainly take a resource officer to every school if we could get one. I'm not sure that that's a local burden that can be assumed unless you're supplanting other services that you provide. Very, very important. Most of our counselors are academic counselors in North Carolina, so we do some contracting with therapeutic providers, but even when they identify someone who has a long history of threats, and even if they do a threat assessment, I didn't mention that in our list of things, but we do threat assessments all the time to determine whether or not students should return to school. Even if we have one of those in place, sometimes it's very difficult to remove students for a long time. So, you're really balancing that, and if you have a threat assessment that someone is, a student in particular is harmful, there are some real limitations on who you can tell about that. You know, unless there's a current active violation of the law, you may or may not be able to tell law enforcement about that. So, that's why I'm saying our, you know, our federal folks really need to pull some of the old laws out and take a look at them and see if they can't do a better job with them. I don't know if they can, but I think that's the next challenge.
Well, Dr. Nolte, we appreciate you being here today to provide some information to the community about what you're doing. I mean, sometimes, unfortunately, there's a perception that the schools and law enforcement and emergency management aren't ready for these things, that they don't plan for these things, but that is just not the case. And that's why, that's why I wanted you to be here today, because we don't, we don't want folks out there thinking that in the community, and unfortunately, in today's society, that's what folks start thinking. But, obviously, with the SROs, the teacher assistance, teachers assisting in things, the crisis plans, the locked, I've been to the elementary school, you can't get in the elementary school.
That's right.
You're going to be, you go onto the high school campus, you're going to be checked out when you come on the campus, the cameras, and, you know, especially the cooperation, the extensive cooperation with law enforcement and emergency management. All of these issues have been discussed, and so the thing is, is that in any given situation, you can, you cannot predict completely the person who is mentally ill, who gets a hold of something, who are, or is planning something completely irrational, and only, all you can do is just do the best you can, and we see as a community that our, that our school system and our law enforcement is doing that, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we've got a presentation from US Forest Service on proposed action for the 12-Mile Project, a landscape-level vegetation management project area for Forest Service lands in southwestern portion of Appalachian Ranger District in the vicinity of Long Arm Mountain and Hurricane Mountain. All right, Richard Thornburg is with District Ranger.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here, and I'm joined by two of my colleagues, Jason Heron and David McPhee from the Pisgah National Forest, and also David Stewart and Jonathan McCall from the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission will be a part of this to say a few words. So, I wanted to give you all, the purpose of our presentation is to brief the Commission on our proposed project activities for this project on the Pisgah National Forest that lies within Haywood County that we're calling 12-Mile, and it is primarily a vegetation management project over a large landscape. We're going to highlight how the project was developed in collaboration with citizens, our interested groups, and other agencies, and we're here to inform the county and the local citizens. And we're here to inform the county and the local citizens, um, how to be involved in further project development and how to comment on this project proposal. Displaying some general project level maps, and it's, I know hard to see at this scale, but this just kinda shows you the vicinity of, of where we are, um, and within Haywood County, and the project planning area, which is this kinda butterfly shaped uh, graphic here that um, is kinda divided down the middle by Interstate forty. So that's where this project lies. And it covers about twenty-three thousand acres of ground, about eighteen thousand of which is uh, federal public lands within the Pisgah National Forest. And that's what these proposed activities um, are about, is on the, on the federal lands within that area. I wanna highlight the community collaboration that we've been doing, um, in this project. And uh, and this is all just part of our effort to be really transparent and collaborative as we go forward. And we started way back in July of twenty sixteen, and we've had several open forums um, in various locations with local citizens, with various resource agencies, and with non-governmental organizations that have an interest in these kind of activities. So very wide range of interests have been involved. Uh, we've had working group meetings on specific issues. We've had field trips out to the project area with folks. And um, we are starting uh, what we call a scoping comment period, now that we've put this proposed action out there after all the collaboration that's developed. And uh, that it will be in Waynesville this Wednesday, um, at the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Office at the Haywood County Center. I'll say a bit more about that at the end. The purpose of the Twelve Mile Project, uh, has several purposes. We're gonna be implementing our forest plan. We're gonna manage for a resilient forested landscape and maintain functional ecosystems. We're there to manage for productive wildlife populations by creating a range of habitat types that are beneficial to a wide suite of different species. It provides a sustainable output of timber products to support local economies. We're there to produce, uh, or improve water quality, hydrologic function and aquatic organism passage, and to provide adequate access for public use, management needs and access to private lands. So within that framework and with all the collaboration, we've come up with a, a suite of project activities, um, and that includes timber stand improvement, thinning of vegetation, regeneration harvest, uneven aged harvest, woodland management, um, creating and expanding wildlife fields, prescribed burning, improving stream crossings, enhancing streams and transportation And I've got a, a spot here for the Wildlife Commission to come up and say a few words in support of the project and a little bit more about the wildlife aspects and the uh, benefits for hunting opportunities.
Try to be brief here, uh, but just wanted to kinda touch on a few things from the Wildlife Commission's standpoint. Uh, we've been really excited about this project because it's the first time that everyone has been invited in from the very beginning of it, which is a great new precedent, and we hope to see that continue. Uh, it's allowed different agencies as well as private parties and conference, conservation groups to come in and get an early foot in the door and really be a part of the planning uh, before anything gets set on the ground. So what we're seeing with this project is a lot of different aspects where we're touching on everything from stream restoration and fisheries to rare and endangered species, buffers for things like raised lily and mountain catchfly, uh, golden wing warbler habitat, which has been really big, uh, but it's not the only thing we're working with, but that's one of the animal species. Um, elk is a big topic and something that we have spent a lot of time working with, both from a habitat standpoint, but also from a movement standpoint, how they're getting from point A to point B, as well as conflict resolution and how we're gonna mitigate the issues that have occurred with our elk. We've also looked a lot at early successional habitat from a management standpoint, and being part of the vegetation management group, that was something that I was a big part of. Right now, I think we have about thirty-seven acres of openings and eighteen thousand acres, which comes down to less than one hundredth of a percent. This is something where we see a really big need, and it's something that this project is helping to address, both with the harvesting and also with some more permanent openings to help with these early successional species. And early successional is things like our fields, our food plots, our cuts where we have young, you know, zero to ten or even zero to ten, zero to twenty-year-old habitat. And that's a really important part of our wildlife habitat that I think we as the public, we tend to kind of forget about that. We get focused on the old trees and we don't take that landscape level view and start looking at what we're missing. And that's a, a place that we're really missing and something that the Wildlife Commission is really excited about this project and seeing the, the improvements that we're going with there. Accomplished so far, I think, you know, we've got a much better understanding of the goals and methods that we can use, uh, a lot of cooperation between agencies and between private groups. You know, we've looked at, at all of these different aspects, and I forty has been one of the big topics. Some of these roads, like Hurricane Road, y'all may have heard about, um, you know, we've, just been a lot of discussion about how we're gonna improve that and start mitigation for that. And as Richard touched on, you know, for Haywood County, I think this, this really comes back to improved wildlife habitat, uh, which is a direct result to improved wildlife health, uh, which then correlates to our viewing and hunting opportunities. Harvesting comes back to employment and income, both through the harvesting as well as timber products, improved water quality, improved air quality, and just mitigation of wildlife damage, both, you know, from roads where we've seen conflict with cars and, and also in farms and residences where the elk and other animals have come in and caused problems. And that's been a big, big aspect that we've kinda looked at overall.
Any questions? Mr. Shemmy, questions for wildlife?
I'm gonna make a few comments because uh, a lot of this, what you've talking about, uh, you know, I've been involved in or had a lot of constituent concerns and everything, and then knowing the territory and the, the area down there, uh, you know, it's a hugely used section. I mean, it's, it's hunted a lot, bear hunt, deer hunted, uh, a lot of recreation goes on down there, you know, moving around those roads and everything. So, uh, it's really good to see that we are taking an interest in, you know, really trying to manage this area now and trying to, uh, uh, you know, I mean, that's, it's gonna add to what's already there, or, you know, and, and be able to, to use it more. But also, uh, the elk situation, you know, been very involved with, uh, private owners that's, uh, had the issues where they come migrate into their areas and they migrate there because they've got fields and they can eat. So being able to go in and, and, you know, open some of this up and, you know, provide these spaces, that tends to keep those migrating, uh, animals closer into proxim- proximity. So, uh, to me, this thing looks like a, a very, very good, well-thought-out program, uh, very good to see something like this happening. And then, uh, again, back with economic development, uh, our area depends a whole lot on, uh, uh, wood products or industry, you know, a lot of jobs out there, a lot of, uh, people who, uh, depend on, you know, going into the woods and cutting timber and uh, pulpwood and stuff coming out, so it gives more opportunities there. So it's a, it, it, not only, it, it makes for environmentally better situation, it makes for recreation, it makes better hunting, it takes care of, uh, potential elk migration, and so, I, you know, very pleased to see this.
Yes, thank you. And, and, and that's exactly right and, and how we're going about it. And we do, we do feel like we're taking a, you know, a significant look and effort on this landscape. These is about, um, over five thousand acres of, of activity, project activity in various uh, pockets within this landscape and, um, designed for these, all these different purposes. And, um, also one benefit is that the, the road work that will be done in preparation for some of the, the commercial and non-commercial timber sales, um, will, you know, improve the road infrastructure that we have out there for well into the future. Um, one thing we are doing with transportation management in this project, um, is, is looking at some of our seasonal closures and needs out there with our, um, limited road budget that's gone down over the years, um, and putting in some more seasonal closures just for the winter freeze thaw months to, um, help protect, protect that, so it's better for the rest of the year for when most people are out there and, and keeping them open for hunting season. And, uh, let me just, uh, we're, um, got a few more slides and I'll, I'll be happy to take any other questions, and thank you. Um, just on the, uh, community collaboration aspect, um, the, uh, public scoping period that we have, um, officially started, and, uh, there is a, um, a package out that's, it's on our, uh, forest website. I'm gonna, um, leave you a hard copy here. And that's also been sent electronically, and, uh, it has a lot of the maps and, and more details about the project. And, um, we are having a scoping meeting, um, open to the public this Wednesday, um, from five to seven at the Haywood County Center on Raccoon Road here in Waynesville. Um, and so we have a, a comment period through June first and a project website, and, uh, we'd be happy to take any, any comments from the county and any other, uh, interested, um, public. And, uh, just to give you a sense of the timeline of the project, um, after we have the scoping period, we'll be, uh, doing our analysis and, um, uh, over the summer and fall, um, there is an objection period timeframe, um, and, uh, we hope to have a decision on the project, uh, come, this coming winter. And then project implementation of a project of this scale takes quite a few years, so that'll, uh, go probably out to around twenty twenty-two. That's it. Any questions for me?
Mr. Shemmy, other questions?
Just a comment I had, he, of course, he answered both my questions on the transportation management, uh, you just answered that. And also, I have had a bunch of constituent concerns as well over the elk, so it's good now that we can go back to these folks and tell them that a plan is in place. So, thank you, Richard, for the time you put in, and thank you for coming by. He come by the shop and spent quite a bit of time with me, and I appreciate that, uh, letting me know what was going on, so thank you again.
You're welcome. And, and, yeah, it's true that the elk are already there, and we're, we feel through this project, we might be able to help take some of the pressure, um, off the private lands and create some more opportunities on the, on the public lands that benefit them as well as a lot of other species.
I just wanna make a comment too. I wanna thank Ri- Richard, I mean, Mr. Thornburg, come by and spoke with me also, and I was excited. When I was growing up, we didn't go to the beach, we went to Hurricane Creek camping for a week. Um, that was our vacation. My dad was outdoorsman and, uh, that's what we did in November. So I was glad to hear that they were gonna try to improve that area and echoing Michael's comments about the, uh, you know, the habitat for, uh, elk, it'll help that, maybe take some pressure off of the private property owners, and I'm glad to hear that. Also, the collaboration with Wildlife Commission, I'm glad to hear that y'all are working together to, to do that. And when you do thin timber, it helps wildlife. I mean, it does, it's a, it's a positive, it's not a negative. Might look bad for a few days, but those, uh, the wildlife really likes it because, you know, getting new vegetation growing and things like that. So I'm, I'm excited that y'all are doing this and taking this, and it's a, it's a huge plan when you look at the size of that land that y'all are encompassing, and it's gonna take a while. So I'm glad that the, that the government is trying to manage its property that they have, and, and that'll help everybody. So thank y'all for doing that.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Richard, you ha- you have some other folks with you. If you could make sure to introduce everybody that came.
Yes.
They can introduce themselves either way.
This is, uh, Jason Heron, and he's the project leader. And, uh, put a tremendous amount of work into developing this project over the last few years and a lot of great analysis that's put us in a good spot. And then David McPhee, um, who, um, is, works in recreation and roads and, uh, has, has come up with a lot of the, the road, uh, analysis for this.
All right. And who was with the wildlife? Make sure this.
I'm, uh, David Stewart, I'm the Southern Mountains Land Management biologist.
Okay.
I'm Jonathan McCall, I'm the Southern Mountains Forester.
Okay. And that was David Stewart and Jonathan McCall. David, I see at the fitness center every once in a while. Um, okay, well, we, we really appreciate you. Okay, we got some more comments here.
Just in, uh, you know, with, with working with the, this national park and then the wildlife and the US Forest Service and all, it, do you see this potentially, you know, cause we, we got a lot of national park land in Haywood County, that this could lead into other areas of the, of the park or whatever, national park?
Well, the Great Smoky Mountains National Park, um, we have been, uh, working in collaboration with them and, and discussing with them some of our proposed project activities because this does border on the northern edge of the park.
Yeah. Cause a lot of what you're doing here, or, you know, some of it, you know, would really help throughout the other areas too, so.
Yes, sir.
But hopefully they'll be watching y'all. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here today.
One more comment. Richard, you are new to Haywood County. I'm, I'm.
That is correct. I'm, uh, the District Ranger here, uh, arrived about four months ago.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I do appreciate you coming out and, you know, you, you went to most ever one of us here and, uh, come by and visited with us, and that's good, very good, so.
Well, thank you. Yeah, wanna be able to work well together, so glad to be here and, uh, um, look forward to any comments you might have on the project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next, we got, we've got, this, today is update day. We got county extension agency update, Bill Skelton, Dr. Bill Skelton, our county extension director.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Kepatrick, Chair Kepatrick and Commissioners. Thank you for, for allowing us to come forward today. My purpose in coming today was really just to highlight the Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program. It's a core group of volunteers that we train and, and then they give a lot of volunteer time and service back to extension and the citizens of Haywood County. Just real quick, that program started nationally in nineteen seventy-three out on the west coast, but we're not above copying a good idea, and so we copied it here in North Carolina starting in nineteen seventy-eight down on the coast here, and we adopted it, had our first program here in Haywood County in nineteen ninety-one, I believe it was. Just a little bit about the program, uh, these folks commit to forty hours of training that they receive. We provide forty hours of training on all aspects of horticulture, fruits and vegetables, lawns and gardens, trees and shrubs, all of that kinda stuff. And then they also commit to giving an equal amount of time back to the Haywood County Extension Center and the citizens here in Haywood County to help address some of the questions and issues that come up with those, uh, those venues. Some typical questions may just be a simple fertilizer recommendation, uh, plant selection in a landscape, you know, sunny, sunny site, shady site, what kinda plants grow where, uh, so that they'll perform well, pest ID and management, all the way up to hazard tree identification and suggestions. And so when you throw all those in together, the average call that these folks respond to has a value of about fifty dollars as, as far as we can tell. Uh, it, it sounds like a lot, but a hazard tree situation can be, you know, if you have to take a tree down, it's three or four thousand dollars to pull a crane in if the tree is overhanging a house. So it can really get expensive, uh, quite quickly with some of those averages. Um, last year, uh, with the training, uh, we do provide research-based, unbiased information. We are an educational, uh, program. We don't provide service in that, we don't typically go out and do landscapes, but we do provide the information so that the homeowner can get, uh, some good information, know what kinds of questions to ask of the landscapers and, and have a better idea that they are doing a good job. Last year in two thousand and seventeen, just a few highlights, there's a number of programs, uh, these folks are involved with. Uh, they had gardens at three of the, the elementary schools, Hazelwood, Riverview and Junealeska. Uh, they worked with first and second graders in all those schools. They worked with the first graders in the spring, and, and a lot of that is planting and, and whatnot, that kinda thing. Uh, and then in the fall, they worked with the second grader, so they get to work with the same kids and take them through that life cycle of a vegetable garden primarily is what they're working with there. Uh, we have several community gardens, the Giving Garden down at the, uh, Canton Library Ranch, uh, and a few other small ones across the county. Haywood County Fair is a big project for them. We'll have thirty or forty of the volunteers help us out with, with the fair and taking care of the plant and flower, uh, portions of the fair, a number of different workshops through the year, um, how to build a compost pile, uh, how to do a monarch weigh station. do a monarch weigh station, you know, whatever, how to do some square foot gardening, a number of different workshops and presentations at a variety of venues around the county. We have one, we have four or five that actively write newspaper articles for information to disseminate and are represented in the local papers, so we're excited with all of that. Like I said, currently, we have 85 volunteers, we train roughly 20 a year, we just finished training the class this year, completed 17, 17 completed the training, we got one more, he's got one more piece he needs to complete before he'll be out and available to help with these kinds of garden questions. One of the key projects we do is to staff a hotline in our office for some of those routine questions, and so they really work hard at that. Last year, this group of 85, and this is going to be a low estimate, because some of them do better at reporting than others, and some of them don't report well, but we've got reported contacts, face-to-face contacts of nearly 1,000 people in 2017, and my guess, just knowing what they do, is it's probably closer to twice that, just, I mean, just the fair and the school guards is that amount, so I know it's a lot more than that thousand contacts. But I do have a few here today that I just wanted to stand up and have stand up and y'all see, Kitty Crane, I'm gonna start with Kitty, and Sue Rudniak, and Marcia Tate are some of our alumni master gardeners, if you will, they've been involved with the program for a number of years, then also Dale Tredway and Julie Taylor have just gone through this year's class, so they're looking forward to it, to getting involved with this as well. Anyway, it's a successful program, we certainly appreciate all the support the county provides to Extension and to this, and through Extension to this Master Gardener Program, and I think somebody else here has a little experience with Master Gardener programming. Yes?
You didn't have to bring that up. I'm a Master Gardener dropout.
Oh, okay.
I started after I retired from Iredell County in the Master Gardener Program, something that I thought was a great benefit to the community for such a program, and so it's something that I put off until I retired, and then shortly after I retired, I took an interim job as a town manager, and the time conflict, I had to drop out one or the other, so I dropped out of Master Gardener, I'm sorry, but maybe someday when I finish working, then I might try to again, but I appreciate you bringing that up, Dr. Skelton.
The Master Gardener Volunteers, and it is time-consuming, they are expected to return that first year, 40 hours of time back, after that, it's 20 hours, but many of them return 100, 200, 400, 500 hours a year, I didn't include that, last year's total hours of volunteer time was 3,512 hours, which represents a $70,000 value on that time if it was a hired person, so to speak, and so we're certainly fortunate to have this group of people helping us out at the Extension Office.
So if someone wanted to participate in the county, they would just communicate with the Extension Office?
Absolutely, they can give us a call, the Master Gardeners at a variety of events through the, through the summer, some of the festivals and things, and that's another way to contact is through the Master Gardener Volunteers themselves, we get a lot of those referrals through the Master Gardeners, actually, but certainly, call the Extension Office, the County Extension Office, and we'll get you signed up and ready to go. We have one class a year, usually runs January through April, meets once a week, about three, three and a half hours each week, one day a week, and by the end, they're excited to have learned all that they've learned, but they're ready for a break and ready to get to work, and not just sit in a classroom for those three and a half hours.
All right, well, thank you, Bill, we appreciate all of you all being here today as well with us. Commissioners, any questions?
I know a lot of this group, and that's a lot of energy. One of them was my pastor for a while, one of them worked with me in Matterbrook, and Marcy, I guess you were, been involved with the foods, nutrition for a long time, so all you need to do is turn them loose and get out of the way.
That's pretty much it, that's what I try to do, to stay out of the way. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, we appreciate you being here today. All right, next we've got discussion and adjustment to the agenda, I am going to move up number nine to make it number two, or right, right behind the presentation of the Mr. Harkel Rhodes back there, and I'm sure he has a lot of things to do today, appreciate him being here, and I can, I can see the angst on your face just a little bit.
He's...
Well, we appreciate you being here, I didn't expect that, so. So, anybody else have any discussion, any changes to the agenda? All right, if not, we'll move to the consent agenda, first item is request approval of April 16, 2018 minutes, does anyone have any questions, concerns, changes, deletions to those minutes? All right, if not, we'll move to request approval of budget amendments, have Julie Davis with a few, Julie, if you'll just call them up, I'll let you announce each one of them.
Good morning. The first budget amendment that I have is for the Recreation Department, and this is $3,500 that has been collected, these are donations that are coming in for the senior games.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? All right.
The next, the next budget amendment is a $10,000 grant for adult daycare, and this is from the Haywood Health Foundation to our adult daycare.
Okay, we appreciate that contribution from them. Next, Julie?
The next one is E-Rate Funding, you remember, we have E-Rate Funding budget amendments almost every year, and the library app gets to choose how they use the funding, we have actually already received $31,344, and they are going to put it to good use, and we have our library director here, if you want some more information on this, but basically, it's going to go for the list of purchases that you see in your agenda here, some supplies, some computer monitors, and that type of thing.
All right, Commissioners, any questions about that? Okay, or any questions about Julie's budget amendments? All right, if not, we'll move to request approval of net change orders for the Animal Services Facility, have David Francis, our program administrator here, David?
Morning Commissioners, hope everybody had a lovely weekend. Before you, is the change order that we discussed at a prior meeting where we added the resin floors to the lobby and some of the other main areas of the Animal Services Building, this was the document that we needed to have signed for, to make the change order official, we discussed it at that meeting, but this is the document that just needs to be signed. As you see on the back of it, there were several ins and outs there, the sound panels were actually added back in, donor from the animal, Friends of the Animal Services Building actually paid for that, so all the, really, you see on here is adding the floors and the changing of the unit, which we moved it out from the front of the building to the side of the building, we had to have a bigger unit there for that exchange there. So, any questions about that, we'd be glad to answer it, but we had discussed that earlier.
Commissioners, have any questions about that? And I'll just mention that we had the open house a week before last, and I thought that went fairly, very well, had a big turnout there.
We had a big turnout and a lot of positive comments from folks leaving the meeting for, it was the first time that a lot of those people had seen the building, and it turned out really nice, and they're having, they're gotten most of the animals moved over that way now, and sort of getting used to the lay of the land, so working out well.
Okay, next item is you as well, update some minutes from December 18?
From the minutes of 12/18/2017, when I was discussing the memorandum between the Haywood Advancement Foundation and the county for the $200,000 loan there, I said it was a 2% loan, when it was actually 2.5% loan over five years, I misspoke there, but the document is correct, I just said 2%, instead of 2.5, my apologies.
Commissioners, have any questions about that? And I will note, on the change order for the Animal Services Facility, we are still within contingency on that, on the budget for that.
Yes, there is several, the contingency was $143,000 for that, so we borrowed a little bit out of that part, we still have, as we discussed before, we still have the fencing to put around the facility, that the, I'm sorry, the North Carolina Department of Agriculture thinks it's a better idea to have fencing around the entire facility, so we still have that to come, we'll probably bring that to the meeting, the next meeting, and we also, one of these, with all the mechanical, you know, a lot of the expense of the building was all the mechanical that was put in there, you have hair handlers for the puppies, hair handlers for the cats, hair handlers for the sick animals as well, and so it's blocking cell phone signals and wireless communication out there, so we'll have to have a booster coming out there, Joey and Doyle have been working on that, and so we've come up with a solution for that as well.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions? All right, and I will note as well that the Friends, the Animal Shelter have come up with approximately $800,000, I think they're still working on another couple hundred thousand dollars there, and we did thank everyone there, the Friends, as well as certain individuals, and also, I want to thank the volunteers that have helped with the Animal Services Facility as well. Okay, as far as the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Awo.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye, and that passes unanimously. All right, we'll move to old business, the first item is request approval resolution for the sale of the Stork Haywood County Hospital to Landmark Asset Services Incorporated, David Francis?
At the last meeting, we held a public hearing to discuss the sale of the old historic hospital to Landmark to be used for affordable housing. Presently, the hospital is in stages with the North Carolina Housing Finance, this, part of this resolution is that for the second phase, for the tax credits to receive for the housing, working li-tech credits that you'll hear, this is the second phase for that. I'd like for you to know that the town of Waynesville passed a similar measure as well too, where they granted water and sewer taps and sidewalks in excess of $150,000 for their contribution as well too.
That's great.
Yeah, so before you, is the resolution outlining the things that have taken place and that will take place, Mr. Chairman, in the past, you've, you want one of us to read it in, or how would you like to present it?
Well, this morning, we got a lot of things going on, do we have to read this in to make it part of the record, or can we just adopt it?
Just adopt it?
Okay. I think we'll just adopt it this morning.
Okay, all right.
All right, so we're going to adopt the resolution approving the sale of the historic Haywood County Hospital to Landmark Asset Services as presented as attachment seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously. All right, we'll move to the request approval for Bunle Lammens Engineering to test additional soils for the Jay Creek Project.
When we met at the last meeting, we discussed Site A, which we did have tested, the soil come back from that test in fairly good shape, we can perform additional testing here, but since that time, the, we've had two other property owners that have come forward that have suitable soils as well too, so we, I think, to make sure that we are getting the best deal for the county, that we may need to be able to have the ability to test these soils as well, and so that's worth this 62, $6,747 would be, would be to test the other sites.
Commissioners, have any questions? I think with what we've experienced the recent past, that it would be wise to test these soils to make sure, and of course, depending on the soil, it depends also on the expense of placing the soil on the property, and so we want to make sure we have adequate soils to place on the property at Jay Creek.
Yeah, and you know, all this is a result of us entering into a contract with a particular entity and didn't get what we were promised, so we've been out there hard, hard at it, and really have several sites now, and, you know, so we want to be, have the leeway to negotiate the best deal, and then if we got to test more, we can test more.
Yeah, yes, as again, as I said earlier, you know, we don't want to get ourselves in the situation that the previous vendor found themselves in, and not have everything adequately tested, because, you know, as important as this site is, you know, if we put mud, dirt on there, it doesn't do us any good, we need to have good, compactable, and clean soil.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Bunle Lammens Engineering for them to test, to test additional soils for the Jonathan Creek Project, the amount of 6,747.
So move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously, and next, Julie Davis, you'll give us our budget amendment for that. Thank you, David.
This is simply to take the, the rest of the contingency, which is a 6,747, from contingency and put it into the project, so we can use that for the soil testing.
All right, Commissioners, have any questions to Julie? I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously?
Thank you.